We're here today to talk specifically about some options in the downtown area. I heard somebody ask earlier, it sounds like you guys have already made a decision. We absolutely have not made a decision on these downtown alternatives. We're here to talk about them to give everybody some information so we can make a decision with the community. So, we make a decision with MINDOT and the City of St. James. In fact, that's important because we eventually go through this process called municipal consent where we actually put a layout before the city council. Then they vote on it and they say, yes, we support this reconstruction or no, we don't, with these kind of things. So, that's why we're here today. We're specifically going to be talking about the two downtown blocks in St. James where the two signals are, where you make hard right angle turns. You've got the post office, the Family Dollar just north of the intersection prior to coming downtown. That's one of the ones we'll be talking about, First Ave South and Armstrong. And then we're also going to be talking about First Ave South and Seventh Street South. So, why are we talking about options? Well, now's the opportunity to talk about what our options are in this area. When we talk full reconstruction, the sky's kind of the limit, other than, you know, from building to building, but we've got all this space to talk about what our options are available to us. Especially, you know, we're not talking just the pavement, we're talking city utilities, sanitary water mains, storm sores, everything's being replaced with this project. So, now's the time to talk about those. We want to review our different options to discuss.
Whoever didn't get any? There's more coming.
A little one pager that summarizes the project a little bit. It talks about, a little bit about the schedule, talks a little bit about the project cost. And on the backside, it's also got the detour that's going to be occurring during the project. Maybe just keep your hands up if you need a copy.
There's some more coming.
We got more coming? By the way, I want to thank everybody for coming. This is a good turnout. We, for those that were here at the May meeting, the May public meeting, this will be a lot of similar information, but we want to get all this information to as many people as possible as we start. We got a little hand up here. As we...
We have more coming. We have 30 more coming.
So, I'm going to jump back into it. So, we want to talk about our different options to optimize traffic flow now that we've kept Highway 4 through town. You recall a couple of years ago, we had the discussion with the community, we want to bypass St. James with Highway 4 and we want to keep it through town. We heard an overwhelming majority to keep Highway 4 through town, especially from the businesses. So, now that we're keeping it through town, we're talking about our different options to keep it safe and optimized well for the growth that we'll experience in years to come. And kind of last bullet point, we want to provide you with a safe and sustainable highway from here on out. Well, especially because St. James is a unique situation. A lot of the existing pavement is actually original 1951 concrete. So, it's been a while since we've been here with even a major rehabilitation project. Today's condition... So, that's why we're here again, to talk about what our options are. Again, we're going to be talking about those things you've probably heard a little bit about, mini roundabouts. We'll talk about the demonstration we did a couple of months ago. And then we'll also talk about the signal alternative that's still very available. So, we've got the two signals in the downtown block. They don't meet right now what we call our different ADA compliance, there are things we usually need for Americans, for Disabilities Act. At a minimum, that would be an upgrade that we would incorporate with the existing signals. The volumes, right now on Highway 4 through St. James, on the south leg before the turn, that's got about 3,500 vehicles a day. On the north leg, we've got about 4,500 vehicles a day. And then on this center block here, we got about 5,500 vehicles a day. It's actually a unique situation where Highway 4 doesn't have the largest volume of traffic. Actually, the downtown block just west of Highway 4 actually has about 1,000 more vehicles a day, 6,500. In terms of truck traffic percentage, something we'll usually keep track of, it's got about eight and a half percent truck traffic. That's pretty common statewide. Generally around the state, you see about 9% truck traffic. So, we're just a little under that for the total volumes we experience per day. To give you a frame of reference, Highway 169 that runs through Mankato, that's a high priority in the regional corridor, those usually have a little more, that's around 14 to 18% truck traffic. So, those highways that are, you know, four lane facilities, those usually have a little more truck traffic. So, again, we're at about 8% truck traffic on Highway 4 through St. James. Oh, I should mention, you know, right now between the two signals, we've got what kind of amounts to a three lane section there. It doesn't hold paint that well, but you've got parking on both sides and you've got really wide pavement for folks to kind of decide where they want to be. And again, part of that's because it's that old concrete, it doesn't hold paint well right now.
Your survey on truck traffic was done a couple of years ago, prior to all the grain from 100 miles north here coming to the small ones.
Yep.
So, we're at much higher than 8% truck traffic.
We will take these counts every two years if it's got? Yeah, every two years, we take counts on our highway on St. James. So, I think we'll have counts coming next year on the highway. So, in terms of the split of truck traffic, what do I mean when I say truck traffic, about eight and a half percent? When we say truck traffic, we're talking about not only your five axle vehicles, we're also talking everything as small as a single unit truck, as well as the buses. So, all of these different large vehicles, all the way up to five axles, six axles and more, all the way down to what we call a single unit truck. Those are the different types of truck vehicles we're talking about. In St. James, when we took these counts, we found that in general, the majority of the truck traffic percentage, it depends on the different times of day, in your morning peak or generally, we like looking at the different peaks. That's when we say when you'll experience most delay at the intersections. Generally, there's a morning peak and an evening peak. These morning peaks are typically from 7:00 to 9:00 a.m., evening peaks are typically from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. In St. James, we've also got a unique afternoon peak that happens right around noon. In general, the majority of that truck traffic is actually bus traffic at the intersection. We talk about these six axle vehicles, these really large semis, that accounts for about 2% of that truck traffic. The morning peak and a little less actually through the evening. So, that's an important note as we talk about these different intersections. And it's no surprise to you guys, intersection are kind of tight right now, making those hard angle right turns for trucks. You'll see a lot of different black paint on the curb as they make those turns. So, that's the existing condition. Now, I'm going to pass it over to Scott. Scott's our traffic engineer in MINDOT. He's going to talk about the different alternatives that we've been looking at in this downtown block. Again, focusing on what we're going to incorporate in 2016 with the construction project.
Thanks, Zach. Can everyone hear me all right?
Yeah.
All right. I'll try and sustain this volume. If I start coming down, just raise your hand and yell at me and I'll try and pick it back up a notch. So, Zach's been talking about options for the downtown intersections. And after looking at this for a number of months, what we've really come up with is we have two really viable options. The first one is perpetuate the traffic signals, but improve them. And then the second option is the mini roundabouts. As we've been going through these meetings, we've had a lot of people say, well, what about an always stop? You know, when the signal's loose, power, police department pulls out stop signs and it seems to work just fine. And yes, the always stop would work with today's traffic volumes, but as Zach alluded to earlier, we've done a lot of analysis work at these two intersections and as traffic volumes increase, just within the next couple of years, you're going to need something more significant than the always stops. So, that's why, again, we're focusing on the traffic signals or the mini roundabouts because they can handle that extra traffic as we start to move forward into the future. So, option one is the traffic signal option. And again, as Zach mentioned, we would take the existing signal systems and upgrade them. Basically, we would have to replace them to make sure they're in compliance with all of our current standards. In addition to improving and enhancing those traffic signals, we also have to look at what traffic lanes are available for the traffic that's on Highway 4. Again, Zach mentioned today, it's kind of a prefer all on that. We really, we have a difficult time keeping pavement markings at the intersections. It feels wide enough, so some people will try and squeeze in and make a right turn lane even though there isn't a right turn lane. But a lot of it is wholly dependent upon what vehicle is sitting right next to them at the light and what they feel comfortable doing. As we move into the future, we know that we're going to need dedicated turn lanes. And so, if you look at the graphic here up on the screen, you can see that we're calling out right turn lanes at key points at these intersections. And where we're calling out those turn lanes is based upon the traffic counts, the turning counts that we've done at these intersections. So, we've actually sat down and recorded video of what traffic is doing at the intersections to determine where these turn lanes are needed. Walking you through this graphic, everything that's yellow would represent the driving lanes. And so, basically where traffic can operate, where the cars and trucks can operate. The magenta or purple represents sidewalk. So, not too surprising in front of the businesses and in front of the park. Also, looking at the colors on the screen here, you'll notice that we have blue. Blue represents parking that would be available in this alternative. And we have orange. The orange squares represent parking spots that are existing today, but that would not be present in this alternative because of the necessity for the right turn lanes. So, as you can see in the graphic up top, or in the text box up top, there's 40 parking spots that are within this vicinity today, but because of the turn lanes, we're going to have to lose 19 of those spots, which leaves us with 21 remaining.
And then part of it as well is truck turning around these tight radiuses that currently, you know, they're really tight on those right angles, we wouldn't be perpetuating those spots.
Yep, exactly. That's why you see some of these spaces missing. And then also you'll note that we have actually painted what we call a vein, or it's a painted island, if you will. And that's to make sure that, you know, people are staying out of this area here so that as trucks make that right turn, they're not going to be in the way of the trucks. So, again, trying to facilitate that movement through the intersections. So, this is our first option for the signals. Any questions at all on this particular option?
I have one.
Yes.
When they're turning left onto First Avenue from the north?
So, you're saying this movement right here?
No. No, just like here.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Yeah, the left, okay.
Okay. That's where it's tight for trucks, you know, if the cars are parked there, you know what I mean? So...
Yep, and that's why you'll see we've held spots back here, but then also with this right turn lane, those spots are eliminated as well. And we've also got another vein along Highway 4, this east west block, to account for that trailer tracking.
But that was one, you didn't take any parking spots off of that in front of the coffee shop, in front of Armstrong.
You're saying right here?
Yeah.
Yep, and I think really what we're focused on there is, you know, from our experience, I don't know, are a lot of people, right, they're not parking right here today, correct?
No.
Right, exactly. So, at this point here, we run our modeling and you don't need to lose this spot right here. So, we actually have, and that's a good point, so whenever we do these modifications, we have models that show us, okay, well, based upon, you know, the big semis with the 53 foot long trailers, how exactly they'll track through the intersection, what real estate they need to make that through in the intersection. So, that's what this is all based upon, is running those trucks, making them turn left, making them turn right, figuring out how much space they need and how much space is left for other cars that are at the intersection. So, what you see right here with the parking elimination and also with the remaining parking spots, the trucks can make it through those intersections.
Will there be any handicap parking? There was handicap or is handicap parking? Will there be any?
What we've identified here is where parking spots could be. I know that there's a handicap parking spot right out here right now. We could work with the city to make sure that that's perpetuated. So, what we're just focused on right now is the sheer number, not necessarily the classification. So, that's definitely an option.
And it should stay about the same for what we've got now, we keep this as a minimum what we have to have in the center one yesterday. Let's see if it takes over. We should open this later.
Any other questions on the signal option? Yes, ma'am.
How do you cross street on those turnarounds? How do, if you want to get from that side to this side, how do you get across?
Well, in this option, we have the traffic signals, so you can push the button.
Oh.
Yeah, we're talking just the traffic signals. So, at the traffic signal, you can push the button and you'll get the lock sign. Exactly, just like it is today. Yes, sir.
My question is, I'm looking at your orange there, you're taking about a third of the block for the right turn lane on First Avenue to go south on South. And I don't think you need that much to get there. When the traffic comes there, if you've got that new concrete and painted, truckers can come out and get into the lane instead of people coming up the center from the south. It should be able to come around instead of taking a third of the block on that.
Sure. And keep in mind that what we're showing here, the point was that perhaps these right turn lanes are too long, that we're taking out too much parking. But these turn lanes are actually much shorter than we would typically install at an intersection like this. So, we've already taken into account the fact that we're in an urban environment, parking is very, very important. It's something that we've taken into account to the point where we've already shortened these up more than we would like to. And also keep in mind that we're also planning with an eye to the future, not just what we'll get by today with, but what we're going to need 10, 20 years into the future as well. And so, based upon our experience, based upon our knowledge, this is really what is going to be necessary here in St. James.
One further question then, on the, coming up from the south where you've got the yellow, are you taking where the purple is or whatever color, I want to call it, you taking that right hand lane away that's there existing now?
So, you're talking about right here?
Yes.
Well, you see, and technically, there isn't a right lane there today.
No, it's, that's the lane, that's the lane for the traffic from the south right now.
Right now, the way this is supposed to operate is there's only one lane of traffic. There's a left through and right in one lane. But it's so wide that people think that they can make a right turn.
So, with new concrete, that would show off that.
What's that now, sir?
With new concrete, if you painted it, if you kept it like it is, and got that lane to where it's supposed to be, people would know it a lot better.
It's technically not wide enough to accommodate those truck turning. You know, we need to strike this so that if you've got a car sitting next to a truck and you've got another truck coming, it'll still work, not if you have two passenger cars sitting next to each other. So, again, it's a delicate balance, making sure that we're taking into account the whole vehicle fleet, as well as what could potentially happen at that intersection.
What percentage of trucks are coming from the south to make a right turn, you know?
From, you're saying what percentage of trucks are making this movement right here?
Yeah.
I'd have to go back and look it up, I don't know. Other questions on the signal?
Even if you're doing this here, it's still not going to prevent anybody that wants to pull up there and use a right hand turn, right? I mean, it's going to be...
No, absolutely not. That'll still be allowed, there just won't be a dedicated right turn lane at that.
Well, there isn't one off the ground.
Right.
Well, people...
That's what I'm getting at, is nothing's going to change if they drive up and they want to take a right hand turn, they're going to pull up there to take a right hand turn with the guy that wants to turn left on the first, they're going to be on the inside lane.
Right, but the difference is here in this scenario where we can actually keep the pavement on the road, we're telling orders, we need to make it to the right of this vein here to allow this truck to come in. So, if you're forcing this part over, you're never going to be able to get two cars next to each other.
That's dangerous.
Right?
It's wide, yeah.
Correct.
It's only going to be wide enough for one vehicle.
And we don't want to see those semis, semis hopping and turning.
I'll just stop this for a minute so we can get some back here to go and see it.
front row seats. So, there's one other question here on the signal.
My question is, as I'm looking at your yellow coming from the south, you've taken that right turn lane and you put the left line right down the center of the highway then, am I correct? You've eliminated the right hand swing that we've got now?
So, keep in mind that technically, there isn't supposed to be a right lane out there today. There's just supposed to be one lane here for all movement from this.
But it curves off to the side and allows plenty of room for coming from the west to turn south.
Right, but again, you don't want to have two vehicles sitting here in the existing condition and then have a truck come swing around.
The striping was offset, yes.
Yeah, it was offset, yeah, it was left offset and you've got the painting on there. We don't see too many farm semis coming from that way, turn to go to the elevator. Both some come from the east and from the north, around from LaSalle and that, coming from the east side. And the semis coming in, they go straight through. Not too often do you have a semi turning right at that intersection.
And we'll, we'll still be perpetuating a little bit of an offset or a little bit of shift there for these vehicles.
All right. But what you have changed to the center of the street is what you're doing now, in this diagram.
Right. It's very similar, this, the left edge of this vein, without getting too specific, is really the center of the road. So, then everything on this side of that vein is pushing those vehicles over.
How wide is that vein?
Uh, generally speaking, I think this one is 4 to 85. I'd have to double check again, I think this one, I thought it was 6. Is it 6? 4 to 8.
It'll allow those semis, if they do need to turn, it's going to allow them a little bit of room that they can swing also.
Correct. I know there's some folks that walked in just a little late here. Somewhat option one here, which is traffic signal, where we're basically reinstalling new traffic signals that meet our current standards, but at the same time, we're going to have to add turn lanes, which is going to result in the loss of heartbeat in the downtown area.
Is that a state regulation that we have to add those turning lanes or is that just a recommendation?
It's really based upon traffic operation, what's going to be needed in the future because, as Zach pointed out, what's out there today is circa 1950's concrete. So, realistically, what we're going to build here in 2016 could be out there 20 plus years before MINDOT comes back to do any significant work on the highway.
1950, it's been after that because they replaced, when they put in the sidewalks and I remember what year it is.
This, this, there wasn't work in the 80's.
Why? That first block was changed that you're talking right here.
Right. Yeah, the city actually needs to build anything back in the 50's. But the bulk of it, the bulk of it that we're working on here in 2016 is back from the 50's. So, my point is, even 1980, so now we're talking almost 30 years. Point is, whatever we're doing out there today, we need to make sure that it's going to make, it's going to make sure that traffic is handled not only today, but well into the future. And that's why we're looking to put the right turn lanes in, is really to facilitate the movement of traffic, that's what's, as we keep Highway 4 through St. James.
What kind of increase of tra- traffic have we had in the last 10 years?
Down First and Armstrong, it's, it's cyclical. Not too surprising with the recession, we did see some drops in traffic volumes. For the most part, for our portion of the state, not specifically talking about this one block, but our portion of the state has either flat or slightly decreased. And that's why when we're talking, looking at future traffic volumes, we're not talking about pie in the sky traffic projections, we're assuming a very modest 1% growth per year. So, over the next 20 years, because of compounding, we're talking about a 22% growth. You know, from talking with our, our expert traffic forecasters for MINDOT, they think that that's a rather reasonable and actually modest increase. You'll see some other traffic forecasts where they talk about two and a half, three and a half or higher percent. So, it's not as if we're trying to inflate the numbers to justify what we're proposing here. We're, we're trying to be reasonable, we're trying to be, well, we're trying to be reasonable with what we're expecting to see on Highway 4 in St. James.
Hi, I have a comment. I like this plan. I worry about losing all those parking spots in front of the Legion, you know, or whatever, especially, you know, there's a lot of elderly that go there and it's handy for them to have handicap right there to get into that building. I don't, I don't worry so much about right lane turns as far as, you know, we don't, if people, if people have the room, they do it, but if they don't, they just wait their turn and do it. You know what I mean? So, to build a special right hand lane that long, I'm not so sure it's needed. I don't think our traffic demands that much. And I can't see it changing that much in 20 years demanding that much.
Right. And again, you know, from our experience, this is what is necessary for the next 20 plus years. You're right, people could take their turns, but our goal is to try and get people from point A to point B as efficiently and safely as possible. And so, we could make people sit and wait, but again, our goal is to make sure that we're trying to get people through there at a reasonable amount of time. That's why we're asking here, we're calling out the right turn.
Do you know what time of year you're going to be starting the project when we do it?
I'll most likely start early spring and be a full construction season. We're still looking at different ways to stage it. And we'll be back for more discussions when we've got a better handle on, you know, if we focus on the south half versus the north half and those kind of things.
Turn them all at once or any...
Yeah.
So, so we're going to start today, and if you start at the north, does that close down the whole part like down by Steve's Corner of the fairgrounds? Are you guys just going to, is this all going to be kind of all tore up at once? I know the detour will happen, this part will be gone, but will the tear up for like local people happen?
It most likely will not get torn up all at once. The contractor will most likely snake their way through depending on some different options. The commuting detour will start pretty much right away, you've got it on the back of your sheet, and then we'll have some signage for lower access through town. That, that's pretty common. We don't, we don't just stop access through there. There are some minor times, right, when the paving's right outside of your place that, yeah, we need to do some things, and there might be some temporary, very short duration shutdowns. Otherwise, in general, access is accommodated.
Okay. Will we having another, always before a major construction project, we'll have another public meeting with the contractor on board? And that way you can get good information.
Because they got some flexibility whether or not they want to start on a certain end versus not. We allow that flexibility to typically, because then we see better prices, which generally, better prices are good.
Okay. I'm going to move on to the next option simply because I know we're getting close to 12:40 and some folks are here on their lunch hour, so.
Good.
So, again, with this signal option, we're looking at, we would keep 21 parking spots. Option two actually has an A and a B really. Option two is the mini roundabout option. And again, quickly walking through what our colors mean here. Yellow represents the driving lanes, so where traffic, where cars and trucks will operate. The red that you see here represents raised concrete islands. So, here you have your traditional raised concrete island coming up to these mini roundabouts. But you also notice that the red circle here in the middle of the intersection, in the middle of the roundabout, is also called out as being red. And what we're envisioning there is just a very slight rise, so two, three inches, maybe four, somewhere in that neighborhood. We've talked about up to six inches before, we also talked with trucking interests and there's some concern about that. But what we're looking at is just a slight raise and it's enough to keep passenger cars, normal cars, from driving right through the middle of the intersection. But at the same time, it's enough to allow a left turning truck to keep his cab in the circle, but then allow the trailer wheels to track onto this center island. And again, with a slight enough raise so that it's not going to rock the truck load, it's not going to tip the truck over, but again, it's going to keep cars from driving through the middle of the intersection. Again, as before, magenta would be our sidewalks. And with all roundabouts, as traffic approaches the intersection, they have to yield to all traffic that's in the circle. And then once they find their gap, so once there's no traffic in the circle, they come and they drive counterclockwise and they drive all the way around the island and then they go through. Just like in the last graphic, the blue represents parking spots. And then the orange represents parking spots that would be lost. So, again, we go from 40 existing spots today, we would lose 22 parking spots because of the construction at the intersections. But then we are able to pick up two spots over here on the south approach to the intersection. And that's simply because we're able to, with the circular intersection, with the mini roundabout, we're able to adjust the intersection and slide it over. But then also you'll note that through all these approaches, we only have one lane of traffic for... So again, we, we go from forty existing spots today. We would lose twenty-two parking spots because of the, the construction at the intersections. But then we are able to pick up two spots over here on the south approach to the intersection. And that's simply because we're able to, with the circular intersection, with the mini roundabout, we're able to adjust the intersection and slide it over. But then also, you'll note that through all these approaches, we only have one lane of traffic for left turners through and for right-turning traffic. And the reason why we're able to do that here with one lane is because the roundabout traffic number actually stops. So you're able to get more cars through, in this scenario, than you would with a traffic signal, so you don't need the dedicated turn lanes.
You're gonna have, with pedestrians, and like they mentioned earlier, we have a lot of senior citizens that use the parking lots and walk across First Avenue. And there won't be any traffic control, right, at these crosswalks.
Right, so the point was, how do pedestrians really get through these intersections? And you'll note that, as a vehicle comes up here, you see this crosswalk here. And that's where your pedestrians are going to be crossing. So if I'm a pedestrian, and if I want to cross the street, I'm gonna come up, I have to look to my left. And keep in mind, that all this traffic that's coming on the roundabout has to stop for me, so a pedestrian on the right away. And I hear people chuckle, I hear people chuckle on yes. I know that motors don't always stop for pedestrians. But at the same time, with the traffic volumes we're talking about here, even if you have one or two motors that don't stop for you, you're gonna find the gap and you're gonna be able to walk across, even if I'm a senior citizen.
It's worth mentioning, in this alternative, when we talk about pedestrian crossings here, there's actually, compared to the other alternative, we're gonna have a refuge here in between the opposing lanes of traffic for pedestrians. There's actually less pavement to cross, because there's not those right turn lanes there. So they've got about a third less pavement to cross with live traffic, and they've got their own refuge storage area in the median. So you're only dealing with one direction of traffic at a time. Whereas today's condition, I mean, if you're really concerned about those vehicles, you're looking both ways, right? Because sometimes people don't stop.
And even if they don't stop at a signal, people can turn right on red. And if you think about it, if I'm trying to turn right on red, I'm looking this way for cars that are coming at me. If I have a pedestrian on the corner, even though they have the walk sign, nine times out of ten, that person is looking to the left as they make that turn on red. So it's not as if a traffic signal, sorry?
You still gotta stop where the red board makes the turn.
You sure do, but he stops for his red, and he turns his head, and he watches for a gap in traffic, and then he turns, and he never looks back over here.
And even with the minis, mini roundabouts, when you're yielding at the intersection, you're still looking left. You're always yielding to the circulatory roadway.
Right. And Zach's absolutely right. This is a radius concrete island here, so again, as you cross, you're only looking for one direction of traffic. You cross, now I'm only looking again, again, for one lane, one direction of traffic, and I cross. And it's a much shorter width than it would be with a signalized intersection.
Are those islands gonna be with ramps, so they'll be handicapped accessible?
Yes. You know, again, because there's a potential for four truck trailers here, as they're coming around, you're probably gonna see a less rise as you get close to the intersection, but then you'll probably see, you know, again, getting closer to four or six inches as you get further away from the intersection. So it's gonna be enough where a car is gonna see it and turn to be right.
In the area of the intersection, it'll probably give you that two to four inch raise, just enough to delineate something for passenger cars.
How wide is that enough here, you're gonna be in another street?
No, again, similar to what we were talking about with that vein, here, actually, here you're probably gonna be a little bit wider. At that point, you're probably.
But like, where the pedestrian crossing is, so that people are trying to get across that road.
Especially crossing, I believe we're close to eight feet, because again, it flares out in the intersection. And you're probably close to four right here.
Okay, so where the pedestrian crossing would be, not eight foot, I mean?
You're talking, Josh, First Avenue, you said there was less concrete crossing.
Well, on First, oh, it's right over here, you're saying?
Or up by the, yeah, First and Seventh? Sure, you said there's less concrete, but so what is, they cross the concrete, what are they walking into?
Well, just the point I was making, like, if we look at this alternative, we're crossing two through lanes plus a right turn lane. In this alternative, you're just crossing two through lanes. So there's, there's actually less traveled lanes, non-ads, roadway. Okay, you cross one lane, doesn't matter.
Somebody's coming in the alley where you can stop.
Hop on north, out here by the post office, and you're going this roundabout, and the train is going across this truck. But you keep on going around and around, or?
We, we have, we have almost the identical situation in Blue Earth. We just built re-sigaling roundabouts down there. And we have a roundabout that is literally within a stone's throw of a railroad crossing. So we've had that circumstance before of, okay, the train's blocking the crossing, what do we do? And it was a problem for about one day, and people figured out, okay, well, as I come through here, I can pretty much see the train. Or I can see that this traffic is already backed up, because they're waiting at the crossing, I keep going and find another way around.
Well, in today's condition, they're being really relaxed, you're saying?
Yep, it's the exact same situation.
The roundabouts in Blue Earth are the same size, they're much bigger.
Yep.
They have, these are gonna be the first time, so, correct?
No, actually, there is a mini roundabout that Dakota County just built in Shakopee. And that opened up earlier this spring, and we're gonna talk about that as we get further into the presentation here. But that mini roundabout actually has the forecasted traffic volumes that, excuse me, let me say this again. That mini roundabout today has the volume that we're expecting these intersections to have twenty years in the future.
And where is it located? Is it located in the downtown area, on the edge of town, or?
It's actually right close to a school, so they've got a heavy amount of traffic that's.
It's not located to the downtown area?
No, it's not in a downtown area, but it's, I would say, in a more urban area, it's not in the middle of nowhere.
Is there a lot of truck traffic that's going through that intersection, or just school buses?
School buses, and you will have, it is a county-state aid highway, so you'll have a decent amount of truck traffic. But I can't type off the top of my head if it's equivalent to what we have here, higher or lower, I'd have to look into that. But they have it modeled so that you can get semis in there.
Um, the, I'm gonna go back to no parking. Is, where's the post office in this, in this?
Yep, the post office is right here.
So it's past the no parking?
Right.
So there's still parking at the post office?
Yeah, this is right here, the sixth parking lot, the roundabout parking lot. Are you guys gonna talk about the price difference between the two out?
We will.
Okay.
Never mind.
So again, the signal alternative left us with twenty-one parking spots. This version of the mini roundabout alternative has us with twenty remaining parking spots. Now I'm gonna jump to another alternative here of the mini. And the twist here is that, in the earlier slide, we had parallel parking on both sides of First Ave. But now, what we're showing here is something that's called back-in angle parking.
Just, just keep letting people, right, it's always gonna talk about options, so we know if we either really like them or really hate them. Let's, let's just, let's just keep an open mind, we're saying.
This, this isn't something that's required, this isn't something that MINDOT is pushing really hard, but this is an option that we have on the table that would allow us an extra five parking spots in the downtown area. So again, it's something where, if parking is absolutely critical for us all here, this option gives us more parking. And with the back-end angle parking, you know, the way motorists approach it, is they drive past the spot, they see that it's clear, and then they back right in. Before I take any questions, I'm gonna ask some folks a question. So you've got, you've got parallel parking out there today. And let's say there's one spot left, you've got a car in front of the spot and a car behind the spot. I'm gonna ask someone, I'm gonna randomly pick a person.
You. I don't park there.
You have to, you have to. How would you park in that spot? What's that? It's awful. This is the last parking spot.
I'd rather back into that parking spot than do a parallel, that is, and I park both ways.
Absolutely. So what you said, she'd rather back in because it's gonna be easier. And where I was going with that question was, to do parallel parking, you drive past the spot, you stop, and you back in. So the operation, Zach was saying we had a site for it, the operation is no different than what you have to do today, but it's actually easier. And so again, this is not an option that MINDOT is saying, man, we really, really wanna see this, because it's neat and new. It's not an option that we're saying you need to do it, it's an option that allows for more parking in the downtown area.
This is safer too. You open your door to that upcoming traffic, I mean, especially if you've got a little pit, you've got a little pit, it's gonna rain all over the street. You eliminate that with this. Then what you say there is, right, you, you open your door, and then you come back towards the sidewalk, you're not in the, you know, lane of traffic.
Then when you leave, look at the view you have. You can see what's coming as you, as you start to slow, you can see that there's traffic coming, you can wait, or you can just pull it right out.
Yes. So is this easier than making it just pull in diagonal?
Pull in angle?
Yeah.
No, but you can just angle them the other way, it's about the same. Like, you just swap them from going this way to that, and so we can just pull them back.
You don't wanna back into upcoming traffic.
There's really not much of a difference.
Okay, okay. So I'm, I'm gonna circle this all back here, so the question was, geez, back-end angle parking sounds great, how about pull-in angle parking? Which a lot of us are familiar with. I can tell you right off the bat that MINDOT is not pushing this, but MINDOT will not allow the pull-in angle parking. And the reason for it is, studies are showing, not only in our state, but across the nation, that when you compare, or when you convert from parallel parking to pull-in angle parking, you're guaranteed to double your crashes. And right now, we don't have a crash problem out here, but we don't wanna create one. And you think about also, with the pull-in angle parking, you pull in, life is good, you go into the store and you come out, now you gotta back out. And you have no idea what's behind your car, and you always are slowly backing out, you don't know if someone's gonna hit you. So for that, right off the bat, I'm gonna say, pull-in angle parking is not even on the table. So now the hands come up, yes sir.
How are you getting that extra room there for, because your car's longer than it is wider on most of them, except your both wide. But how, how are you getting that extra room there?
Right now, that downtown block is actually extra wide, it's got what feels like.
No, I meant to, to your other one, to the option two.
You're talking about how do you get the space to do angle parking?
Yeah, how, how are you getting that extra room there?
Yep, so compare that to how wide the sidewalk is there?
That, that's really what we're swapping there, is extra wide sidewalk for some additional parking, because we've got the existing space in that block. The reason that we're keeping it on this side is because there's certain regulations that we and our federal partners have, about not getting into parked properties, and so that's why we're talking about it on this side. And nicely enough, it's actually on the side that has all the businesses adjacent.
Are you, are you talking about decrease in size of the park, of the sidewalk there?
Yeah.
On that angle parking?
No, like, I'd have to double check the numbers right now, we have in general, anywhere from, it's around ten to twelve feet of block. In some spots, we got those light poles, so it operates a little less than four feet. Here, we'd be talking about still putting something back that's about ten feet wide.
But, so the angle parking is not an option with those stoplights?
No, because of the turn lanes. And now with that, your turn lane, if you go back, at this point right here, you're not gonna have the width because of your turn lane right here, and you're not gonna have the width because of the turn lane over here, it's pushing traffic over.
Really, we're able to gain that width, because again, you're right, it's a lot wider than parallel parking. Parallel parking usually planned for about eight to ten feet, with the back-end angle, I think we're planning about twenty-five feet. And so that's about, that's about the addition of a turn, or width.
So I'm upset with the commuter, I can back my school bus, I can block everything.
It won't support that kind of width. The chief of police looking at it.
I really like the back-end, this, this one right here, because on occasion, I take stuff to Legion. And I'm backed up to a sidewalk, I can leave my trunk open, it's so easy to get in and out of there. I like it also for the protection of kids getting out of vehicles versus opening my door in traffic. I like the roundabout here, I can, instead of waiting one, oh, about a minute or so to cross the street, I can actually just cross the street as a stream. I really like this that's on the screen right now. The only thing I don't like here is a school bus, I like that idea. Some of these vehicles, these club cab pickups are so long, they can't park in there. There's gotta be a limit to how long a year could be to back into these.
And, you know, we would have an edge line painted along here. So you'd hope that if, if someone backs in their, their large truck, and the front end is hanging three feet over the line, that they're gonna get the, the hitch of the house to be parked there. And you would still have the, the parallel parking on the north side of the street for them, or also the parking lot as well.
The vehicle length you'd fit in here is something anywhere from about twenty-eight to thirty-two feet, which is gonna cover everything from your passenger cars to your larger pickups.
So again, with this alternative, you know, we're able, we're able to ultimately have twenty-five parking spots in the downtown area, compared to the signal alternative where we're only talking twenty. So this does pick us up, more parking spots. And again, just an option available, we wanna make you aware of these options that we've seen around the nation that have produced crashes, improved safety, and just set you up for that sustainable highway.
The model that was done based on First Avenue and Armstrong intersection, when we ran the semi through on its right, how about the other, seems to be a smaller intersection? Are you confident that it'll still be adequate to handle rough traffic going through there?
We are, so the question was, we modeled this intersection at GM Rungies, and we'll actually show some videos of that. And this one over here is a little smaller, I believe it's about sixteen feet smaller, I'd have to double check again. Two things, we modeled both of these intersections with what we call, with, with our different truck turning template software. And with that software, it showed we could accommodate truck turning in these intersections. The reason we put this one down to ground is, this one actually has significantly more traffic added than the, this intersection. I'd have to double check my numbers again, but it's surprising, just because of all this downtown block that comes most northern, so. But our, our software shows both intersections can accommodate those truck turns.
What's the footprint difference between the two options, what we have versus the roundabouts?
You're talking the existing intersections?
Existing intersections, and then going to the roundabouts.
In general, most of the curb lines, and it'll be hard to see from back there, are staying pretty similar. This yellow right here was the old curb line, we're talking something really close. On this intersection in the city parking lot, we could talk about taking a little space there, because we don't have buildings. Actually, at this other intersection, we're very close to the existing edge curb footprint, because we got buildings, we're building. I think this one's about, I have to double check my numbers again, this one's in the area of about eighty to eighty-four feet from outside edge to outside edge. And this one, again, is probably sixteen feet less than that. But compared to existing, it's not taking a huge amount of space, you're just talking about a couple feet here, a couple feet there. Well, that's actually partly why we're talking about what we call mini roundabouts, they're actually smaller in nature than your traditional singaling roundabouts, like we built in Blue Earth. Those, like I mentioned, this eighty-four feet, in Blue Earth, those were about a hundred and twenty feet, I think. And we still have the real estate saved for a big central island.
What about a combination of traffic lights in the backup lanes, stuff like that? And not have the center, you know, keep the, keep the parallel parking on the other side, and keep the stoplights, and, and set this back in angle with the stop. And not have the right turn lane over front of Legion in that, because then you'd still have your parking permit.
Sure, and that was similar to an earlier question. You need the right turn lanes with the traffic signals to make sure that the, the intersections operate reasonably. Because the roundabouts are so more efficient at getting traffic through the intersection, you don't need to worry about right turn lanes, left turn lanes. So it's, that's where you really see the benefit of the mini roundabout, is it's able to get the traffic through there more efficiently than the traffic signal would be. To try and bring the traffic signal up to the same level as the mini roundabout, you need the right turn lanes. Scott, let's, let's talk about the efficiency of them. Let's talk about them, I think it's the next slide. Actually, I'm gonna skip these couple of slides here, but what I want you to focus on, folks, is, the information that I'm gonna walk you through here is based upon the four PM to five PM hour in St. James here. So basically, when we did our, our traffic counts, we found that to be the busiest hour out of the day. So, all this information I'm presenting to you is basically for your evening rush hours, period.
Why are you chuckling?
We have no rush hour.
It's a lot busier than nine.
Well, when I say rush hour, you know what that means, right?
Yeah.
So as we walk through these here, the top half of the screen represents information pertaining to a signalized intersection with today's traffic volumes. And the top row here is for the intersection at Armstrong, and then the bottom row is for the intersection with Seventh Avenue. And all these numbers are basically telling you how much traffic is at the intersection, and then also how much delay each vehicle at the intersection encounters. Yeah, yeah, the top half here is signals. The bottom half here is minis, but I'm just gonna, I'm just focusing on the top half right now. So these are signals. Top row is at Armstrong, bottom row is at Seventh Avenue. We we calculate how much delay each vehicle's gonna have, and we give it a letter grade. So just like in school, A means awesome, and F means you could do better. And if you look at today's traffic volumes, at both intersections, we're giving it a score of, or a grade of B. On average, you've got about fifteen seconds of delay at the Armstrong intersection, and then ten seconds of delay for each vehicle at the Seventh Avenue intersection. And that doesn't sound like a lot, but keep in mind, that's an average delay. So the person that gets to go through in a green light, they have zero seconds of delay. And then the corso that comes up right as it turns red, they have to sit there for a minute, or actually, in this instance, potentially eighty seconds. That's our our cycle length out there. They have to wait eighty seconds. When you average it all out, each person is about fifteen seconds of delay.
Is there a reason why one stop light is forty-five seconds and the other one fifteen?
Right now, without without giving you too much detail, the signals operate in what we call an actuated mode. So it's all dependent upon how many cars are going through the intersection. So if I'm sitting there on a red light, and cars keep coming through on my cross street, they keep sending a signal to the the controller saying, yes, there's still a car there, keep giving them a green light. As soon as those cars disappear, or a certain threshold of time passes, then the guy that has the red light gets the green light. So it's really dependent upon how much traffic is coming to the intersection at the exact minute you're sitting there.
But they're in their time steps. This block, this one here, like forty-five seconds, no matter how many cars are going through there, if you're sitting there, it's forty-five seconds. The one down in First and Seventh, a lot less than that. So there's gotta be a master timing.
Yep, there's there's two ways, if you have the red light, there's two ways to get the green light. One, that that threshold per time, if the clock reaches forty-five seconds, it's all the green time they get, and then the other guy gets the red light. The other option is, cars aren't coming, and then you get the green light. So there's two ways to get the green light, no cars or a max.
What deal with that signal?
There's actually loops in the pavement that tell the signal, okay, a car's driving over me. And it sends a little buzz over to the signal and says, give him another three seconds. That's the time they need to get through the intersection.
There was a comment earlier when there was a stop sign, that there's no traffic back though. Why don't they put a thirty-second time and check it, and see what the traffic that got through?
Well, and that's that's one of the inherent problems with the traffic signal is, to make sure it's working efficiently, and make sure it's working perfectly, you almost have to have someone that's sitting right across from the intersection monitoring it every day, or at least checking it weekly. We don't have the resources to do that, so we put in timing that we know is gonna work. It's not the best, but it's the best we can do with our resources. It's another virtue of the the roundabouts, there's no timing. It's wholly dependent upon what traffic volume is at the intersection. So you don't have to constantly go out and adjust it. It works when there's power outages or power failures. And it's cheaper to operate, because you're not paying an electric bill to run it three sixty-five, twenty-four hours a day. And don't forget, we're setting up those signals stop rate twenty-four hours a day, so you'll see there for peace, and sometimes it's not needed other times of day.
What about if you push the crosswalk button? Because sometimes they don't seem to do anything.
Sometimes the crosswalk buttons don't seem to do anything? So you push it, and you don't get the lock sign?
Well, it's like there's. Yeah, and it's.
Yep, it is, it is. Exactly. If you push the the walk button, or if you push the push button to get the lock sign, and that was a comment that a gentleman back here had, depending upon where you are in the cycle, you could wait that eighty seconds before you get the lock sign. And that's just because it tells the cabinet, or it tells the controller, there's someone there waiting to walk, give him a lock sign the next time you come around. It doesn't say, stop all the traffic, this person needs to cross right now. And so with the mini roundabout, if you look for your gap in traffic, then you can cross. So in most instances, you can cross a whole head block quicker than you could with the traffic signal. Yep, so with the signals, with today's traffic volumes, both signals operate at a B. Now, if you were to install the mini roundabouts today, here's what you would see at the two intersections. You go from about fifteen and a half seconds of delay at Armstrong, so just shy of six seconds of delay at Armstrong with the mini roundabout. You go from ten seconds of delay at Seventh Avenue, to two seconds of delay at Seven. So you go from a B to an A. And that's times, you know, five thousand vehicles a day.
Right.
Every single vehicle that goes to that intersection, that that delay starts to add up. Yep, exactly. And keep in mind that, just one sec, sorry, see you back there. This this is an average delay. So with a mini roundabout, for the most part, you're gonna see everyone a lot closer to this delay. But with a signal system, again, you're gonna have someone that could be close to eighty seconds, and you're gonna be having people that are close to zero seconds. So here, it's pretty much an even distribution delay, up here, it's very lock sighted. Yes, sir, in that.
Do you have a chart showing how fast they're doing with four-way stop signs versus any of this?
I didn't, simply because within the next ten years, the four-way stop is gonna be operating at a level of service C or D. And it's at a point where when we do our designs, we make sure that we're not at that C or D threshold, because we wanna make sure that the product is, one, not gonna annoy people, but then, two, it's gonna make sure that it's serving people efficiently. So at this point, we knew that the all-way stop wasn't even gonna be a contender, so that's why we we didn't go to the level of analysis that we did here.
You're trying to say it's gonna be less safe?
No, I'm trying to say that it's gonna cause more delay than the signal would.
I don't see it.
Right. I know, I know you don't see it, but again, from my experience, from studying it, from having done the analysis, I can tell you it will.
Our farmers' minorities are getting larger and larger, and you're losing farmers. So you say that the numbers for St. James is gonna increase, I see it decreasing. Have you done a study on it?
We, as Zach said at the beginning, we do our count on every one of our trunk highways every other year. So Highway four gets counted every other year. And we haven't seen the decrease in traffic volume. I know there's been a lot of changes just in the past year, and we haven't seen the decrease that we're thinking, geez, maybe we should pull Highway four out here completely. And in general, I mean, Scott said, we're planning for a modest growth. To plan for a significant drop in A B T., say, a fifty percent drop, that's basically planning for failure. If, either that's planning for the community to, you know, not sustain the function.
Oh, but if you're, if you go with stoplights and you're around, you're a right lane turner, you're not planning for failure.
Absolutely not, which is what we don't wanna do as well, is what I was saying. So we wanna plan for that modest growth that we expect could occur, so we're setting you up for success.
I think we have to let this people know that whichever option is taken, we're gonna lose parking places downtown. To me, that is, it's a giving. And, you know, they're just trying to show us some of the options of backing in. It comes to a point, and again, you have somebody that's not real, but people backing in, and they're sticking out into the highway, you say they may notice if they may or not. And I understand it's a lot easier to back, you know. I don't parallel park. There isn't two places there, I don't, I don't park there, I'll go someplace else. But, you know, I need the people who parallel park, maybe if you look down on Bay Street where we have our lives, we lose parking places every day because of the overall, the people who don't parallel park. But so I, I think you have to let us know that whichever option we go to, the lights, traffic lights, or the roundabout, we are gonna lose parking places.
That's just a matter of reducing the number that we're losing.
But I think you need to look at how one versus the other, you lose parking spots in more, not all of them in one area.
Sure.
One dispenses them a little more easily than when some stations have stoplights, they had all of them in front of the.
And I guess it's only fair to mention that if they had the option for the backup angle parking, the city does have some option with their park area and their parking lot over the V F W. in that area that could be looked at, too, that we talked about. To increase additional parking downtown, but you would lose some of your parking.
And the lot where the Boston used to be is gonna get paved and destroyed also.
Right. Now, Scott, should we jump to?
Yeah. And so, again, all this information, it's just trying to show you that in today's situation, the mini roundabout is gonna give you less delay than the signal. And then, of course, not too surprising, when we look at twenty years in the future, with our one percent per year growth in traffic volumes, the mini roundabout is gonna give you significantly less delay than the signal will in the future. And even in the future, with those right turn lanes at Armstrong, we're talking about a signal system that is getting a level of service C. And that's when we start to kinda get concerned, especially in our part of the state, people really start to get impatient when they experience level of service C. Folks up in the metro area, that's an everyday occurrence, but for us, not so much. So when we do our design, we try and make sure that, you know, we're, we try and stay away from C as much as possible. So again, the mini roundabout's gonna ensure that we're not having that type of delay. We're gonna be at eleven seconds of delay at Armstrong, and then three seconds at Seventh Avenue. And then, we talked about it earlier, briefly, this is the mini roundabout that Chocopy just built. You can see they've got an athletic complex, as well as school complex here in the northwest quadrant of the intersection. But this intersection today has the traffic volumes that we're predicting that these intersections will have twenty years from now. And it's operating just fine.
In the heaviest hour?
In the heaviest hour, correct.
But we're talking buses and automobiles, we're not talking semis.
Well, and keep in mind that.
Well, exactly, I understand that.
That east-west route is a county-state highway, so that's, that's the road where you really expect to see on the county system, more of that semi-type traffic. Let's show you guys some videos, quick up, the demonstration that we had at GM Rungies. We took, Fred took a bus through. And this, again, what we saw in those pictures that Scott's talking about before, we painted those lines in the parking lots to see how it would operate. Yeah. I didn't bring any cop cars, I'm sorry. And so this was just a few months ago, I believe, right?
And this is the larger of the two.
Yes, yeah, but again, our 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 modeling shows both intersections could accommodate this turn. And keep in mind, the center island there is designed to be driven up on by vehicles like this, and it didn't need it at all. We actually put all these cones up on the outside, so we drove with it. We watched to see if any of the cones got tipped over, and none of them did when Fred drove through it. And then we also had Scott back here take his semi through. And what you're watching here, we didn't give any instruction to the drivers on how to do it. We wanted to see how they did it cold, without any coaching. And so he's on the center island, but that's okay. That's what that area is for. That's, Scott, was that a fifty-three foot trailer? Yeah, it was a fifty-three foot trailer. So that's, that's the larger six-inch, or.
Yep.
And you notice he drove over the tail end there of our island, but that's gonna have that sloped face, so it's, it's not gonna disturb the road, and it's not gonna feel like he's driving off a six-inch-high curb. And again, that's without any coaching.
He had the one bucket. The guy who did the U-turn in there.
We didn't, we didn't bring that one along. We accidentally had somebody come in while we were doing the demonstration, and said, can I take it through? And we're like, yeah, take it through. And then, I think he got a little confused and decided to make a U-turn through the intersection. It actually worked, but that's not what the intersection is meant to be. Back to tear up some concrete.
Well, down in Missouri, about twenty years ago, or fifteen years ago, they put a roundabout in down by a school area. They had to redo it because the school buses were going over it, because they couldn't make it. It was a hazard to the kids, they had to take them back out.
Yep, and, you know, the first roundabout that Minnaud built, we're over at the Medford Alpha Mall, and we screwed them up. And so just this past year, we were rebuilding them. But I don't know about you folks, but the first time I do most things, I'm not doing it a hundred percent correct. And we've learned a lot of lessons from that particular example there, from Medford. Chocopy has built their mini roundabout, and every time we do one of these, we learn more. And I'm not just saying mini roundabouts, I'm saying all roundabouts, all intersections in general. So just because you have one instance where someone had to rip a roundabout off, doesn't mean that that's gonna be what happens.
And they had to take three of them out.
Yep. Well, and part of what we do then is say, what are we trying to accommodate? And here, we wanna make sure we can still accommodate truck traffic, because it is part of the highway use. So that's why it was important that we ran this demonstration to see. Yep, it worked, the modeling software was really good.
Can I ask Scott a question?
Sure.
Scott, which is easier, the roundabout or the way we have it now? But plus, they would add.
Honestly, they're both difficult.
They're both difficult.
I mean, the roundabout, right now, I'm driving the truck through it, yeah, I was able to manage it, I was able to do it, but my concern is, how high is the curb gonna be? And my concern is the product inside the trailer, you know, whether it be groceries on a super pair, and that truck gets a super pair, and the groceries are relatively over, boxes are damaged.
Yeah.
Or high-profile vehicles like the Pete trailers going back and forth from the co-op. If the curb's gonna be too high, driving over top of the roundabout, excuse me, over the roundabouts, if that's gonna cause a high-profile vehicle that has a sort of X.
And Fred, how about the buses?
I can get a roundabout. Right out, right out the edge of it, right on it, but we can, we can.
The one advantage with the roundabout that I saw driving through it, it pushes the traffic off to the sides of the intersection. So like right now, on the First Avenue and Armstrong, making that left-hand turn, you always have that left-hand squeeze, worried about a car coming up to the intersection and clipping the front of the car. This would push the car off to the right side, so it would eliminate that, that problem. But it still would be driving on a curb to get it done.
My question with the truck demonstration, I know it looks weird, and I'm sure that the trucks would handle going over it, but if there's a car behind the truck, how is, is it safe then? Because if you're, if you have a car that's driving right behind it, and that truck starts going on the roundabout, are they gonna know how to handle staying in the roundabout and avoiding the tail coming back out?
Just, you, you normally have those issues where, you know, the semis have that sign on the back, so you're watching while it's turning.
But I have to, because once, so I know how to follow a truck if it's turning on a normal turn, or it's on the road or whatever, and if you're not that close. But once it starts, because in the demonstration, you had a moment where ninety percent of the trailer was over the thing, but you could still conceivably fit a car around it. And I'm just, I, I wouldn't do it, but I'm saying somebody may be able to like get stuck there, and when it kind of wits back, maybe it could cause a problem.
And don't forget, the car still has to yield when they approach the intersection, so they shouldn't be following the semi right behind them.
Well, they could legally, because they yield, you know, you can stop, unless there's somebody else coming.
Just circuit, just the circulatory roundway. We could watch it again.
Well, like, I mean, I don't, I'll, I can talk to you guys after, see what you just asked, but I don't know if anybody else is concerned about that.
I think, you know. That's the key, I said, some, you shouldn't be following that close to begin with.
Right.
But you're gonna have payment markers that are telling you, geez, why am I driving over a yellow line, which you typically don't do?
Because I, what I was saying, and I hope nobody actually like minds that I'm doing this, but. So once he starts making a stern, it's fine, and if you're following behind them at a normal speed, it's fine, but right here, he's taking up road right here, and here, so if you were turning around here, now he's no longer on the road, you're gonna be all of a sudden stuck with a truck this way in front of you. And it's just, I, I don't know, if he, it waits around, it may.
You're always gonna yield.
It may just confuse people, and it may cause problems.
You're always gonna yield to anybody in the circulatory roundway, including the back end of the semi. And then.
But when you're yielding on the road, aren't you just yielding for oncoming traffic? So if there, if there were two cars, and you're yielding onto the thing, you could conceivably follow them, but there's no traffic.
You're yielding to anything in the circulatory roundway. And, you know, keeping in mind, the area that we're talking about, if you had a truck making that way over, everyone's gonna hang back, and there's not gonna be someone saying, I'm just gonna latch right onto his bumper and follow him. Everyone's gonna let him get to the intersection. That, that happens in general as well with multi-lane roundabouts. If there's enough width there, that you can drive side by side with the semis, but generally, these vehicles hang back, just give them some space. Keep it low there.
So one of the other things that's been, we're talking about small roadblocks. Has anything been figured out with that yet?
Part of that is still us discussing how much raise is needed to discourage, discourage passing vehicles in the center of the roadway. It might be such that we talk about just painting and having a different colored, textured concrete in the center of the roadway such that it gives passenger vehicles a cue, hey, you're not supposed to be in this area. And so, that's one of the alternatives that, you know, if we paint the flush, it might take care of Scott's concerns, but then we got to really be on a different painting than the, than the. But we don't want to create a lot of bad behaviors in the intersection. I think they've got a four-inch style curb that's, uh, don't get into detail. And that curb, it has a little bit of a, a swing to it. Um, we, we talk about something that has a little gentler slope on it, because we know, I guess, you know, we want to make sure we're coming close to trucks. I want to quick talk about costs and then we'll jump to questions, because I, I want to, don't leave before we talk. The mini roundabout's cheaper. Here's why you're like, no, Zach, it's, it's got more pavement at the intersection, I, I saw it, it's wider. The two alternatives, the signal option versus the mini with parallel parking, those actually have a very similar amount of surface area pavement. And that's because in the signal situation, we've got added width for turn lanes. And so, in those, in moving to the mini roundabout, we take that turn lane pavement and put it at the intersection. So there's a very similar amount of pavement between our two alternatives. The big difference you see in cost, and I, and I should highlight this, so again, our signals in the range of about just a little over a million dollars. The mini roundabout alternatives are a little, are around $500,000. The reason you see that about half a million dollar increase, or $600,000 increase in between the mini roundabouts and the signals is because, again, if we've got a similar amount of pavement between the two alternatives, the difference is the signal system itself. Generally, those run us about $250,000 apiece, new systems that are all are different, um, what I, what I call our, our push buttons for pedestrians. And then, this is a unique situation where we also have the interconnect with the railroad, and that runs us quite a bit too, that's about $100,000 for the signal system. So again, our, our signal alternative costs about double. Um, and there is, it, it's worth mentioning, in, in all these alternatives, the city and the county does have cost sharing associated with these, with these intersections, because there are local legs to these intersections. Um, I, I've highlighted the costs over here, you know, in general with the signal, you're probably talking around $30,000 for the city, a little less than that for the county.
Is that, are those figures going to be passed on to the residents and the localways? Those figures for the city and the county?
I don't know. Um, in general, we have cost participation with the city, and then it's up to the city to determine how they want to accommodate the funding, whether it's assessments or something else.
So about maintenance costs?
This is initial construction cost. Um, in general, when we talk maintenance costs, there's a certain level we have for patching and salt and other things that have, uh, high costs associated with maintenance. We see those pretty similar between.
Um, I agree.
Yes, absolutely.
Yep, so that, that's the point here, is the signal systems would have more maintenance costs than obviously the mini roundabouts would, because you have to pay the electric bill, you have to pay the electrician to go out there and check on it, change light bulbs, check on timing, um, there's just more maintenance with the signal system.
This is just showing that table in a different format, trying to show, again, the price difference between alternatives. Again, that's because the signal system is just added features from that alternative, right, too. So that's, again, really why, again, we want to talk about what your different options are in this downtown block. Again, now's the opportunity, we're completely reconstructed. So we want to talk about what's available, make sure we get input. We got some input at our main meeting, we got lots of good questions then. I'm glad we had such a good turnout now, we're still going to be around for questions. Um, I've even, I've even brought along a video that shows kind of what the mini would look like at St. James. It's, it's a little different than, maybe we can hit the lights again. It's a little different than what you'd expect, we wouldn't expect nearly as much median back on some of the local legs. But this is modeled with, uh, today's volumes and today's truck traffic. So you'll see some different trucks here, um, that's that eight and a half percent truck traffic that you see here.
That's the tricky part, going off the first by the Eagles Club there on Seventh, going west and go south. Yeah, you gotta go around west, you gotta go around. And I would venture, yes, if you put no lift in the middle, and you just do a different color and texture, that will hardly keep the first-time users around there, but I guarantee the locals back for that.
Also, I had to talk about what, what's the balance then? How much of a lift can we get there to discourage passenger cars? If, you know, this is one of the alternatives I'm just looking for. You can hit the lights to get a picture. So these are the options that we see in this downtown block, um, available to other.
Would you like drops? Kind of what needs to happen now?
I mentioned it right at the beginning of the meeting. We're not trying to, I mean, we're making you aware of our options. You can probably see from us that we lean towards the mini roundabout right now. And I'm not, I'm, I'm just trying to be, you know, um, realistic here. The reason we lean towards that alternative right now is because, A, we don't see any fatal flaws associated with it, B, in general, we see better pedestrian accommodations for roundabouts compared to your traditional intersections. It's half the price, and it accommodates vehicles through the intersection more quickly, more efficiently. So it has all those different things going for it, which is why, in general, we lean that way. But it's important that we get input from the community, from the locals, because we take this picture then, to the city council meeting with the report, and we say, here's what MinDOT is recommending as an alternative we want to go forward with. It's called Minnesota, and you want to read about it, it's Minnesota statute 160.165. And we take that for the city council, will probably be taken in the next couple of months. And then, they either say, yes, we approve, or no, we don't approve. And then the state needs to go back to the boards and say, you know, if they're not approving, what can we do then to accommodate what the issue is? So again, we want to make this decision together so that we move to what we call an approved layout.
Why don't you just ask people for a show of hands, what do you like? After they've seen it, what do you think is the best?
Sure, let's do a show of hands, we can do a question. So. Oh, we did a show of hands at the main meeting as well. Um, I think we had, uh, one or two hands raised for the signal alternative. We had one or two hands raised for the mini roundabout with parallel parking. And then, we had a little over a dozen hands, uh, for the mini roundabout with diagonal parking. And then, just some hands that, you know, I'm just here to listen, so.
Before we do that, has there ever been an option in the back room of just connecting Highway 4 North and Highway 4 South at Highway 60?
We.
And then, the ones that want to come through town would still be able to come downtown by the radio station.
About two years ago, we, we had some outreach with the community, we put out some surveys. We said, in 2016, we'll either bring Highway 4 through town, or we can talk about bypassing town with Highway 4. And we put that survey out to the residences and the businesses, and overwhelming majority said, heat Highway 4 through town. And so, that's why we're planning for Highway 4 through town now, because of the overwhelming majority that supported Highway 4.
You see a lot of truckers using, my daughter lives out there by the old radio station, and there's a lot of truckers that, that you don't go through town, they come, they come that way and go around.
And we actually, the county system, we, we talk about how the highway system, we get volumes on it every other year. We get, we get highway volumes in the county system every four years. So we could, we could check into those volumes, but I don't think they're nearly as high as this 5,000 people.
Oh, I wouldn't want to put any money on it.
We can do that.
Do a lot of county rolling.
In general, when. Yeah. There, there are times, I don't want to play with it quite too long, there are times where our highways get very low in terms of AT that we start talking about with communities, about turning back those roadways to the community. There are times too, where the, where the county roads get really high with volumes, it's like, we may need to take this over to the state highway and upgrade it. We haven't seen that in.
Should we show?
I have a quick time, I get there. There's two trucking issues. One is you have all the local grain that comes in farm service, which affects people pretty much in Lockland County. You have a huge volume of regional grain coming from Sleepy Eye, Hector, Womer, going to the old plant in Welcome. So, the way I see what you're doing on costs, you're putting it up to the city council to decide their recommendation. And it's cheaper to do the roundabouts. However, what, what are the options in truck traffic? What have you thought where it should go if you do put the roundabouts? Should it go past the high school, which is a heavy road, which probably the community doesn't want, the school doesn't want? Should it go straight down by the old, uh, radio station down past Farm Service?
Let me just interrupt you, we would still support heavy commercial vehicles on Highway 4 through town, even with the mini roundabout alternative. Our, our modeling shows that.
But from a practical standpoint, you guys have not driven a semi, and the volume that's coming through there is, it's going to be an issue. We're going to raise more and more grain, yields are going up in corn, uh, more people are going semi. The whole issue is, will grain move another direction from Sleepy Eye, Womer? Or is it firmly going to start coming down to Welcome, Vermont, and some other things? So I think you need to be aware of, and that's changed. I said your survey was from four years ago or whatever.
I do, yep.
The, the traffic really has changed a lot in the last year, and that's partly because the railroads, uh, rail traffic is difficult to be trained right now, there's so much oil getting shipped by rail. So, the markets have changed where the corn's going. Whether that stays that way or not, you need to be aware of that.
Okay, but, you know, and as Zach pointed out, our, our position would be that trucks would still use Highway 4. It's still a state highway, it's a 10-toner, it's designed for getting people not just to St. James, but also to St. James. These roundabouts are designed to facilitate those movements. And keep in mind those delay numbers that I was showing earlier, that's not just for passing the cars, that's for all vehicles going through the intersection. So you're not going to have a truck sitting there idling for 80 seconds, you're going to get the truck through in a much more efficient manner. So it's, it's not that we're building a roadblock or an obstacle, but trucks, this is going to be a better, a betterment for them as well. If we, I mean, you remember what Scott said, if we can accommodate that center island without too much shaking. Because again, if you, if you felt, you know, making that left, those vehicles are pushed over, so it's not as much pinching, as long as we can make sure that island isn't raised that much for the, how different things in the back.
My biggest concern was for the downtown area, remember? We are going to lose from 15 to 22 spots regardless of what option are it.
On, on Highway 4, yeah.
On Highway 4, no choice.
But we're also going to gain spots if they repave the, the Boston parking lot and mark that, we'll gain approximately 10 to 15 spots.
So again, let's, uh, to highlight the numbers and.
Aren't you doing a traffic count on 4 right now?
But he's got a counter out there.
Yeah.
Yep, we very possibly are doing counts on 4.
So you'll get curd out of it.
Yeah, that usually lags a couple of rounds. Yeah, and that, that's a question, someone said, where at? I'd have to double-check and make sure where we're doing our counts, but we do have counts.
I know there was one out by 430.
Yeah, right outside of.
Yep. Okay. Don't drive over it six times. Then we'll have to start planning for 4%.
Well, and actually, if we do drive over it six times, then our folks in St. Paul will say, well, that count isn't right, so they'll send us back out to recount it. Please, please.
Why do you remove both the stalls on those great, great, uh, roundabouts?
We've been talking a little bit with Jerry Krebs in our local maintenance shop. Uh, a couple of different options are found, like a traditional intersection, we'll clear out, we'll still clear that central island area, because it's still all paved. Um, and then, just talking with the city about different ways for the snow storage prior to then picking it up and pouring it out. Um, shaking your head.
Since the state highways are involved, does the state in any way become involved with the cost?
Absolutely, the state actually contributes a majority of the construction costs associated with this. Local costs are with local legs as well as parking areas. Uh, the state actually pays for 90% of the parking areas, 100% of driving lanes, and the local community pays for 10% of the parking areas. Uh, for community, if you're, if you're over 5,000, you pay 40% of those costs. But St. James is small enough that they only pay 10% of the parking cost.
As we do the highway in 2016, we have to lose a bunch of infrastructure underneath, sewer water, storm sewer. That's going to be about the same price as this, basically, two-year estimates, about $6.5 to $7 million that we have to do underground that will be assessed through the entire city, not any abiding orders. Obviously, somebody has to be studying orders before, yeah, it'd be the overall tax levy for the entire city, so $6.5 to $7 million. In addition, we'll have orderly parking on the Boston lot, blacktop construction for that. You're going to lose, I think, nine or 10 feet to the west side of the, where the Boston was. You're going to make wire, it's going to be, it's.
Gary?
Yeah.
If that becomes a parking lot, then there's no alternative to ever build on there?
No, they, well, there's an alternative, but the probability is pretty minimal because of all the spots that we're losing, gaining part of the bank, 30% of the bank.
We're saying St. James isn't going to grow downtown.
I wouldn't say that.
The other thing I should mention, that we brought up, which is, locals do pay up for 100% of their utilities, so the sanitary, and the water main, and a portion of the storm sewer, a local set costs, but it's way more than the city. So, we're going to do, we're going to shoot you a rough show of hands now. Can we keep answering questions after that, if folks got to go, or they're hungry, or they've missed their big commercial? Um, again, reminder, the three alternatives, it's the signal, the parallel parking. Um, we lose about 19 spots, 20 spots. Uh, there's the mini roundabout with parallel parking where we lose 19 spots. And then, there's the mini roundabout with diagonal parking where we lose 15 spots. So again, it slowly moves down, but again, we lose a similar number between the first alternative, um, again, different operations, we lose less with mini diagonal, and certainly, you know, a new type of, uh, treatment that hasn't been utilized in St. James before. So, just a show of hands, who likes the first alternative? We got signals now, let's keep the signals, but we're going to be optimizing flows and timelines. So who likes that alternative? Okay, so that corner. Who likes mini roundabouts with parallel parking? That was option two, where we lose about the similar level of parking as the signal term. So who likes option two? Okay, quite a bit less. And who, who likes option three, the, the mini roundabouts with diagonal parking? Okay, it looks like about, hey, just for the whole room, okay, about 25%, I would say for the first one, about 75% for the third ones, and one whole lot for the middle ones. So in general, that's, that's what we've heard today so far, right? If folks got to leave right now, we want to thank you for being able to go over some of this information. A lot of it's on our project website, we've got contact information if you want to send us comments there. It's always available when you're doing.